Good morning, everyone. It's time to call our meeting. Your honor, we appreciate everyone being here at this time. I want everyone to stand. Commission America will be the sign of the occasion and a flag to the U.S. side.
I have to say, yes, Father Lord, for the one that I give to this day and the women that we're having to do. And Lord, we just ask that you bring guidance among any one of us commissioners or everybody in the sending making this situation here to do what's best for all Columbia counties. Lord, we just want to ask a special prayer for the upcoming elections. Lord, we just ask that you put a head protection around our county, our country. And Lord, just please look out for the first responders here locally, women in our country, and the men and women who defend our honor and our freedoms across borders. Lord, we just pray that you put a special head protection around the issues surrounding the great country of Israel, all these things in your name. Amen.
Good evening. Good evening. Good morning, America, and to your republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, we appreciate everyone being here. Would there be any additions or relations to this morning's meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We have two additions that I'm aware of. The first one is a request for a consider or discuss moratorium on RV parks and campgrounds. And the second one is a request by staff to consider an early start date for Columbia EMSs.
Okay. Will there be any more? A motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I will.
A motion by Mr. Hollingworth, second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor of Senator St. I. A poll of lights on that motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
The RV park moratorium, can we do right after the public hearing with Mr. Gooden?
What?
Can we do the RV park moratorium after the public hearing with Mr. Gooden?
Yes, sir.
That he's here, hearing the discussion.
Okay, all right. All right, at this time, we have a public hearing from our county planter. Louis?
Morning, Commissioner. How are y'all? This public hearing is a consideration of a request by Ms. Ferro. She has lots, nine and 10, in plantation estate subdivisions. It's a subdivision from back in the establishment of the 70s. It's been used as one lot over the many years she's lived there. She's wishing to split them back out. To do so, she has to move a lot line. And that's what this minor subdivision application concern is moving the lot line and replanting these two, making it order for her to sell the one lot.
Okay.
And moving about 50 feet, it still meets all zoning requirements.
Okay. All right, I declare this public hearing open. Would there be anyone in opposition to replant of lot nine and 10? Would there be anyone in opposition? Not hearing any opposition, I declare this public hearing closed. Wishes of the board.
Mr. Chair, this is in my district on 242. There's no issues, talk to neighbors, everything's great. So I bet with that, I make the motion to accept.
Motion by Mr. Murphy. Second, second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor of Senator St. I. A poll of lights on that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
You wanted to do the moratorium while Mr. Gooden was here?
Yes, sir. We are moving, deviating from our agenda, we are moving the addition up now for discussion. Louis?
I wasn't aware of this, but it's, there's been a request for a moratorium on, for discussion, for moratorium on establishment of RV park grounds, RV campground parks throughout the county. I believe most of the discussion has involved ag three zonings, but it, but your discussion may be encompassing all zoning sites. That's the details I haven't.
Okay. Comments from the board?
I have, what, one big one on 90 up there, another one which we have right there by the interstate, which is not exactly me, but it's right on the edge, but, which is a good place for one, but I had one that was trying to be approved out on Lake Jeffrey Road, and it got, it got beat, you know, in a P&amp;Z. You know, all the neighbors came out. I just, I just know that a lot of counties around here have put moratoriums around them because they got so inundated with them so quickly. And I just want to keep an eye, you know, I don't know how many have been put in y'all's districts, but I've had two big ones put in mine, and I, one's out on 90, one's on, was it going to be on Lake Jeffrey, and, you know, so it's, it's just one of those things we, I think we need to watch out for and pay attention to because it can get out of hand because it has another county, it's Lafayette County, and so I think it's Swanee County. I don't know if Swanee County put one on or not, but it's, it's a way for people to make money, and I always want people to make money, and the way times are now, hard times, some people, you know, retired, they, they want to live in a camper, and I don't, I don't blame them. But I just know that we need to pay attention to it because sometimes things get out of hand before you're able to, you know, slow it down. So I don't, I don't know how we can make sure that our county residents don't have, you know, camper places right behind their house, you know, I just, I know that some will have the right zoning and, and that's, that's what it is, but it's just something I'm concerned about because I had, I had a lot of calls on both of the, you know, and I, I believe in people making money and being able to do well, but there is a point where, you know, every neighborhood, like in some of the counties are having campers, camper spots go in them, so, around the neighborhoods. So I just want to keep, keep our eye on it if nothing else.
Well, here is what we need to do. If we, if this board is considering a moratorium, we need to come up with rules and regulations that govern, you know, these, these, these campgrounds. You can't have a moratorium that, that, that's out there without any guideline to, to remove that moratorium.
Mr. Chair, I might add, the LDRs were, were structured 33 years ago and didn't, didn't consider the impact because RV park, uh, parks were not as popular then as they are now. There is a lack of regulation based on the, the anachronisms in our LDRs, so it's, it's very appropriate to possibly put that in. I've known other counties, I've known other counties, laboring counties put it in for 18 months until they established this appropriate regulations for it in the meantime. So the discussion is appropriate now, there is a lack of regulation in the LDRs, and whatever the voice player might be in there.
All right, Mr. Ford?
Louis, don't we have something in our LDR now about campgrounds that we, we regulate them that they have to be at least five miles apart?
That's an ESA zoning only. The other zonings, that, that doesn't exist.
That's right.
So that's just ESA zoning.
Mr. Chair, you know, go ahead. You know how we are. We're trying to plan ahead for everything. Everything we do is for the future. We won't even be here one day. So I just want to make sure that, that we put either, you know, make it work so it, it doesn't affect the people that have lived here all their lives in a negative way, you know, and, and I know that it can, and people will call you, and, and I got lots of calls about it, but it's just something we need to get on and make sure that we, we don't have them popping up right around neighborhoods left and right, you know.
Well, Mr. Chair, we, I've had a couple approach B here in the last couple of months, and it's, you know, with the economy doing what it does to some retirees, they're looking at as a way for supplemental income. And to put, there was one question, can I put 10 here? Can I put six here? And, you know, that's what I fear is that you just start blotting the whole county with little, put a sign up on the, on the RV park. The, and we was at conference just for a few days here, me and Mr. Ford, I was talking with a commissioner from down around Broward County, and he said also, he, this is a statewide deal because the millennials, if you want to call it, they're just like Robbie just said a minute ago, they can go buy my $80,000, $1,000 camper, lift $500, $600 a month, that's a lot cheaper than we're all living. So, you know, and I get it, and it's not a bad idea, but I think structured and done the proper way, and I'm not saying everything needs to be a $25 million RV park like in Sanderson, but, you know, you don't want to, we're trying to create a good, you know, continue to create a good county, and you go around every corner, you got, you know, RVs here and RVs there, nothing wrong with RVs, I just think it needs to be structured and have some guidance to it.
Okay.
And then I guess, Louis, is this something that you, Joel, and others reach out to other counties and see how they've dealt, or are dealing with this, I would assume?
I've been in, in contact with other counties for several years now, both in my past life and this one.
You had lives up there? Sorry? You had lives up there?
Yeah, well, I thought it was, but anyhow, all the rural counties are dealing with this. Land, land is cheaper in the rural county, they can't do it in the Broward counties like they, they've done in the past, it's just too expensive. And there are some very beneficial RV campgrounds, and then there are some that are not so beneficial to the communities. And that's, that's where we're falling now that we, the county needs to address and create that regulation to something that'll be long-term, as the commissioner said, that beneficial to the county neighbors and answer the county and not takes away from it.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, I gotta ask Louis to verify one thing for me. Campgrounds are special exceptions, correct?
Yes.
I didn't find anywhere where there are a right of use.
No.
Okay, so what that means is even when somebody does want to do a campground, it's within discretion of your planning and zoning board to say no for any one of, there's 11 reasons, and one of those reasons has like 10 subcategories, so there's all kinds of different reasons they can say no. The last one that was said no to was based on compatibility. Give you an idea of how that works. I don't think there's anything wrong with the board offering policy direction today, saying that you don't want to see any applications move forward, that'll hopefully save some people some money, and then we can immediately go to work. I will need to bring a resolution back confirming the moratorium, providing some outer limits, but I do think, you know, going through the, the land development regulations, other than a 20-foot, five-foot side setback and a requirement of 1,200 square foot per campsite, you really don't have a lot of restrictions in these LDRs. And I think that's what Louis has been confronted with is, you know, other than the, the planning and zoning board or board of adjustment, excuse me, saying, hey, no, you're not compatible, your, your planner's kind of got his hands tied. He, he can't really direct these folks to sort of upgrade their facilities, that'll need to come from you.
And Chairman, it's a brand new thing.
I was just going, I, I just wanted to add, I have a motorhome, we, and me and my wife, we do travel with motorhomes, and I'm gonna tell you, it's hard to find a place to stay at night now because camping is so popular. And, and one of the reasons why is because a lot of people do live in their camper and they stay it, and they, they fill these campgrounds up because they live there full-time. So I'm just saying, I think something we might want to look at is extended stays in campground also, people living in the campgrounds. And I don't know how we, I'm open for suggestions how we address something like that or if we do address it, but, but I will tell you, it is, it is a problem. You probably got to book a month ahead to get in a campground, especially if it's in an area where it's, you know, where you're traveling for like Disney World or in the mountains or somewhere like that. It's, people are booking these campgrounds up months ahead of time now, and it's, I mean, we've had to drive all the way back from Atlanta at, at night because we couldn't find a camper between Atlanta and Florida to stay at. You know, it, it is a problem if you're traveling for people traveling with a campground.
Right. I, I think it's just a new, new thing, you know, it used to, campgrounds where you went, like Rocky said, you go to the mountains, you want to go to the mountains three days, you get it. Now they're neighborhoods, they're literally neighborhoods of campers. That's it. They're gonna live there forever, you know, until they decide they want to move somewhere else, but, but I look at that one out there, they got, they got all kind of stuff around there. Shade, put up things, put up, I mean, it looks like a house. I mean, it's, it's, you can tell they're not leaving in a year or two, they're gonna be there, so I, I don't know, I guess we just got to temper it where we do, we do the best for our citizens and also the best, as much as we can for, you know, the campground folks, so.
You had something?
Commissioner, when y'all are working on this as far as campground, I'll give you a good example. I've got an elderly couple that lives up off of 20 Valley Road, your district commissioner, Williams. Can't see the camper from the, from the property. The problem is, is, is they were going to build a house, husband had some medical issues, they no longer can build a house. I told them they had to leave that site with the camper. They're basically moving into a campground, and that's one of the issues that we're having is, is because of health issues or mother-in-law don't have any place to stay or anything, so they're moving to these campgrounds and they're staying there full-time. So that is something that needs to be looked at on how we're going to regulate these. As code enforcement, we don't regulate the campgrounds or anything, that goes back to planning and zoning, but we all know that there is a big issue with campers in this county. Get complaints on them all the time. So I'd like to sit down with the board sometime in a workshop or something and come up with some ideas on these campers on what we can do to approve, I mean, they don't need to be an RSF zoning, but if ag zoning or something, there may be some way we could work, do something there in, in certain areas, everything. Three Rivers in Mr. Ford's district and everything, that's a good example. There's people leaving their campers down there all year long, and by the LDRs, you can only leave that camper there for 24 hours to load or unload. And what's happened is, is these people leaving campers down there all week, or all week, staying down there all week. So the, all these things need to be addressed. So maybe sometime we could all get together and come up with some ideas and see if we can get some of this stuff worked out with these campers.
Joel, how do, how do we address the, and, and we know it, it's a new dawn where people is live, actually living in that camper. How do we address the solid waste issue, fire issue with this situation?
And that's been part of the struggle with it, right? So you'll have somebody who's in an RV on a piece of residential property or a smaller agricultural tract, and they should be paying the solid waste assessment, they should be paying the fire assessment, right? But we don't pick them up. So we've already started auditing, Commissioner Murphy, as you'll know, last year sometime, I think, started pushing for us to audit these sites. We've been trying to catch as many as we can. We also have code enforcement citing people who are living on property with an RV improperly. You, you have sanitary issues that go with the septic tank, you have power connection issues, we have reduced the amount of, you can only get a 110 power pole in it, is that what? 110?
100.
We reduced it. So we're, we're doing everything we can short of saying, you know, we're going to come out there and haul your RV away. Nobody wants to see that. But citations are being issued, the regulations have been tightened, Ms. Ford at the health department's been helping us sort of tighten up on septic tanks. So we've done all those other things. I, I think it's just like anything, you're never going to get it 100% right. In, with respect to Winston's points, you know, there are hardship applications that can be filed. You know, there's things that can come back to the board of adjustment for further consideration. We do hear those stories all the time, you know, I was supposed to move, but then this happened and that happened. If somebody can prove that to the satisfaction of your board of adjustment, maybe they get an extended permit. Compliance is something that we can achieve when we know there's an issue and we can bring people to the table. It's, it's those folks out there that we don't know about. And again, we don't patrol, we won't patrol, so unless somebody complains, we'll never know.
Well, it, but here, here's, here's the problem. It's, it's getting out of hand. And, and I look at the, the RV park, park homeowner, it's the same as I do with the people that go there on, on Balconards and, and, and Prepert Highway and buy one of these buildings and make a house out and they're living in it. It's the same identical thing, one of them is on wheels and another, the other one not. So we, we, we need to, we need to have some guidelines and all the way to have guidelines, and we need to have a workshop and workshop it out, and with you and, and Louis and the code enforcement department, come up with, with something that, that can address the issues that we have before they get larger.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I may, Louis mentioned it, Winston mentioned it, and me and Kevin just dealt with the situation, that, the review of the LDRs, like Louis said, some of them haven't been addressed for over 30 years, that's a, that's something that we really need to take on and get, me and Kevin ran into a situation up there the other day, north, it's in your district actually, where the Dollar General's going, and, you know, we, we talked in this room, we're not doing one more, especially, the next thing you know, the board of adjustments, they, nothing they did wrong, but they agreed upon it and never comes back to us, you know, and that, the people on planning and zoning board of adjustment, they don't know the issues that this board dealt with on Pine Mountain Highway.
I know.
You know, now, we got to live with it because that's what our laws are, I mean, our world, so the LDRs really need a very fine-toothed comb going over because I'm telling you, we got some problems in there, and which creates exactly what you're just saying because, you know, I, I actually went to one, on Huron Road out there where Level Dick's developed that, I actually went to a realtor that sold a portable building twice. They should know that there's a, a law that says you can't live in something under 400 square feet, but they sold it twice as a home. That, that's not, they need to be held accountable to. So that needs to be into our LDRs as such as that they need to walk that line also, you know, and now, you know, you got people suing this one and that one, and, you know, we're not in it, but the point still is, is that, and, and just like Joel said, there is a hardship situation, but you, you just got to work around it, but you, I know you deal with it, just, you know, we've, we've all seen it. And what was it, two, three, you and Ben Scott, remember that time I had y'all go out on 47? Y'all went down one road and caught 10 places that weren't paying no fire assessment, I mean, the minimum fire assessment, and no trash. 10 out of 11 lots was not paying nothing. That's why we got to go with what we did. But I, I got a case going in my, my district right now on three RVs in a, one yard and paying one trash assessment.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Louis has requested funding in next year's budget to do a revamp of the entire LDRs.
Okay.
So that will be one of our budgets.
That will pass.
We appreciate it, Louis. Okay.
Joel, what do we have to do to, we need to, to start on?
If it pleases the board, I think a, a motion instructing Mr. Gooden's department not to accept any more applications until we can adopt a resolution, and then we can adopt the resolution at the next board meeting, if, if that's the pleasure of the board.
Madam Craig, you got that? Okay.
Are there pending, are there pending ones now that are?
There's, 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 there's three that have been approved in various parts of the county. I'm expecting applications within the next few days of three to four more. So your actions tonight will be, or this morning will be very welcome, so I'll, I'll have some direction out of there.
Okay. Okay, would you, Joel, would you read that?
Again, the motion would be to direct Mr. Gooden's department not to accept any more applications for campgrounds, pending adoption of a resolution, formalizing the moratorium.
Seven minutes. A motion by Mr. Murphy. Second, second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor of signature, say aye. A poll of lights on that motion carries. Okay, we'll go back to our, our agenda.
Approval of consent.
I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, some of the motion by Mr. Hollingworth, second by Mr. Murphy, all in favor of signature, say aye. A poll of lights on that motion carries. A motion to adopt the consent agenda. A motion by Mr. Hollingworth. Second, second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor of signature, say aye. A poll of lights on that motion carries. All right, Kyle King?
Hey, good morning, good morning, Commissioner. I'm here today to present resolution number 2024-24, the resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, designating Columbia County, Florida as a Purple Heart County. So shortly after I got elected in 2021, I took a little trip to Missouri for a baseball tournament, and coming back through, you know, Missouri, Mississippi, Alabama, every, every little town had a little plaque outside their sound limit saying this is a Purple Heart city, Purple Heart County. And I was like, you know, what is, what is it? What, what's going on? So it's part of a Purple Heart Trail that was established in 1992 in Virginia, and it's a way to honor our military men and women who have earned the Purple Heart. It's, you know, it's a plaque you can put out, a designation you can, you can claim for your organization. So in 2022, I became the second tax collector state of Florida to designate their office as a Purple Heart office. And doing my research, there's about 38 counties in the state of Florida that are Purple Heart counties, and Columbia County, hopefully after today, will be number 39 to, you know, claim their support for our veterans. We have a few veterans here, would y'all like to stand real quick to be recognized? Here, if you're a veteran, will you please stand? Thank you very much. Thank y'all for your service, we appreciate it. So, I mean, it's really, this is more of a symbolic gesture, there's nothing that comes really with it other than the recognition that knows that the, you know, members of our community have earned the Purple Heart, that we recognize your sacrifice and your commitment to our country and the protection of our freedoms. And I think it's a plus for our community to always honor and take care of our veterans, which I know this board is a big proponent of taking care of our veterans. Commissioner, if I could read the resolution?
Yes, sir.
So a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, designating Columbia County, Florida as a Purple Heart County. Whereas the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners supports its military and veteran populations, and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use, initially created as the badge of military merit by George Washington in 1782, and whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or made the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the mission of the military order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among combat wounded veterans and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiative, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. And whereas Columbia County has a large, highly decorated veteran population, including many Purple Heart recipients and their families, and whereas the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners appreciates the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and believe it is important that county acknowledge these brave men and women for their courage and show them the honor and support they've earned. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners for Columbia County, Florida, that Columbia County, Florida is and shall forth, henceforth be a Purple Heart County. Be it further resolved that the Board of County Commissioners for Columbia County, Florida, encourage all members of our community to show their appreciation for the sacrifices Purple Heart recipients have made while defending our freedoms, to acknowledge their courage, and to show them the honor and support they have earned.
Motion to approve. Seven minutes. A motion by Mr. Murphy. Second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor of signature, say aye. A poll of lights on that motion carries.
Thank y'all very much. Thank you.
Just while we're going on to the day, how many Purple Hearts do we know we have in Columbia County?
I actually looked it up before I came here and I wasn't able to get a number. Purple Heart organization was about, have somebody here today that they couldn't make it.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But I'll try to reach an answer.
Not that it matters, but it would be kind of unique.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all very much. Joel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have a.
Thank you for having us.
Good seeing y'all again today.
Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Chair. I have a, a few items for the board's consideration this morning. The first is an interlocal agreement relating to solid waste assessments within the town of Fort White. The town has agreed to allow for assessment of both its residential properties and collection of commercial accounts with franchise fees through the county with our Waste Pro contract. You'll recall that was a little bit of an issue. The town will still need to adopt an ordinance giving formal consent to our assessment of its properties, that's a step they need to take. This interlocal agreement relates more to the contract we have with Waste Pro and their consent to its terms. There was a little bit of an issue where there was consent to the residential assessment, but they wanted to hold out the commercial accounts as separate. We had to discuss that a little bit, how Waste Pro offered the rate it had because it got the commercial business on exclusive franchise. That all got resolved. This interlocal simply memorializes that so that everybody's clear. Once the town adopts the ordinance, they will include the town within our special assessment at the same rate we charge the rest of the county.
Okay. A motion to take the recommendation of the attorney?
Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the solid waste assessment interlocal agreement with the town of Fort White.
A motion by Mr., Mr., Mr. Ford, second by Mr. Murphy, all in favor of signature, say aye. A poll of lights on. Opposed, like sign, that motion carries.
Mr. Chair, David, uh, real quick. A store front of our, we'll just say the town of Fort White. Me and Joel move in there, we open up whatever. What triggers the, we start putting our trash out there. What triggers the retriever of that money to Waste Pro?
I believe we do not charge for roll-off cans for commercial. So you'd have to have a dumpster.
Okay, what, what does, okay, dumpster, okay. So, okay, we'll just say house next door, Mr. Ford used to live. You know, if somebody runs it out and move, you just pop in there. Or, you know, that house been vacant, I'm just throwing some scenarios here because me and Frank have some conversations over the years. They, they don't have a way when they put it up to Ron's residence, okay, he's, he's on the list, you know, that, that kind of. Is there safeguards there?
So the, the solid waste assessment is assessed against each residential unit regardless of whether or not it's occupied.
Okay.
So if I have ten residential properties, I'm gonna pay the assessment on each one of those properties, whether I've attended in there or not. When it comes to the commercial accounts, um, again, the roll-offs Waste Pro doesn't charge for. We never charged for, we don't collect the franchise fee. But when they go up to a dumpster or anything larger than that, they then have to reach out to Waste Pro themselves.
Gotcha.
And they deal directly with Waste Pro, uh, to secure whatever size container they want. We then assess and collect the franchise fee at the, uh, landfill. One of the issues Fort White had was they wanted to receive that franchise fee back, which I think we all agreed made sense. It's, it's sort of their franchise that was participating with us. So that, that amount is still gonna be calculated, it's still gonna be remitted to the town. But it's only on commercial accounts greater than the two roll-offs, um, or the two hand cards.
Got it, yes.
So the agreement in effect is our contract that we have with Waste Pro is what would, we would implement in Fort White.
Yes.
There would be no differences. I think that's where the conflict came up, is they wanted something different than what our contract said.
Yes. Got it, thank you.
All right. Joel, you're still on?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the second issue is one I was asked to, to brief, um, which is, uh, the county's participation in code enforcement in the town of Fort White. Um, evidently, there've been some recent issues, uh, that, uh, caused the county manager to reach out to me to review that interlocal agreement. And, uh, he asked me to advise you of your options. Um, with respect to that interlocal, it was formed back in two thousand nineteen. Uh, it states that the county is going to provide code enforcement officers to the town, uh, but that we're going to do so in accordance with our own standard practices and procedures. Uh, and as the board knows, uh, the county's long had a policy that we do not patrol, uh, and we do not initiate complaints administratively. Uh, we've allowed the county commissioners to initiate complaints in the same fashion as, uh, citizens do. But that's because the county manager has oversight of the code inspectors and not the county commissioners. So it's a little bit different. Um, based on a, 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 a current issue that's been going on, uh, it came to management's attention that the, the complaining question had been initiated by the town. Uh, and that caused us to make some inquiry with code enforcement officers who did confirm, yeah, that's right. That's, that's where these complaints have come from. And that caused us to sort of reassess, right? So to the extent there was any confusion, uh, about whether or not you can administratively originate a complaint, uh, the board could clarify that, uh, and, and I can send a letter to the town to that effect and that, you know, we had this discussion. Um, the other option, if the board wants to avoid the agreement, is to provide a hundred and eighty days, a hundred and eighty days written notice. Um, you will still be contractually bound through the hundred and eighty period, but as I indicated, our contract says we will only do things in accordance with our standard practices. Um, so we'd kind of have to thread that needle. We'd still have to do some, uh, uh, work with the town to make sure they understood the scope. Um, but those are sort of your two options right now.
Joel, Joel, that's, that's out of your district, you wanna make the first comments on?
That's Rocky.
We got some people wanna talk on.
I might have paper.
Yeah, I, I, I will. Let me help this.
Oh, okay. You'll let them speak first and then we'll see what they.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak here today. My name is Alexander Vega. I am, uh, co-owner of the Collective Food Yard and Garden. Vega, V E I G A. Uh, I'm the co-owner of the Collective Food Yard and Garden. And, um, my business has been one of the selective enforcements that the town has been issuing or calling code enforcement on. Um, without going into much of the details, uh, our business had to file a litigation against the town of Fort White. Um, we purchased our property back in November of two thousand twenty-two, um, and been in operation for about a year and a half now. Uh, the ordinance of the town of Fort White is instructing the code enforcement to, uh, enforce has only just passed two months ago. Uh, our lawsuit states that the recent enacted ordinance is arbitrary and unreasonable and violates your, uh, standard, well, your, uh, standard practices in the state of Florida standard procedures as well. Um, as I, as mentioned by Attorney Foreman, in the letter to the board, the town violates the standard practice. And we ask that the, uh, uh, that you do end the code enforcement, uh, interlocal agreement with the town of Fort White.
Say that one more time, I didn't.
I, I, um, I do ask that the board does end their interlocal agreement with the town of Fort White.
All right, before you got.
I don't, I don't know all that's going on with this issue, but, uh, I do know it's been, this has been an ongoing issue for several months with town management and the collective. Uh, they have been operating close to a year and a half. Uh, according to what Mr. Vega said, they do have a lawsuit with the town of Fort White right now or, or entering into a lawsuit with them. Uh, one thing I don't want to see is the county get wrapped up in this lawsuit.
I agree.
Uh, so, you know, whatever the board wants to do about this situation, I understand and I'm okay with whatever, you know, at this point, whatever, whatever we decide to do.
I, I got a motion and we can have a discussion, don't we? But I move that we discontinue the interlocal agreement with Fort White for code enforcement.
Second.
Uh, motion, uh, second. You know, discussion. All in favor, signal for saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, that motion carries. Joel?
And, uh, for the board, I'll, I'll get the notice and remember it's a hundred and eighty days. So this won't end immediately. Now, in light of Mr. Vega's comments, I want to be real clear about my memo and, and this board's position. I don't know, and I've not offered an opinion nor have I reached a conclusion on whether or not any selective enforcement actually occurred. Okay, our policy is designed to reduce the risk of selective enforcement. And that's what caused the issue to come forward and that's what gave rise to, um, my memo, my opinion.
Chairman.
It's very important that I qualify that opinion, that I've not made that determination nor do I have a position on that.
Okay.
Chairman? Would it be possible to have Mr. Winston come up and talk about any kind of, you know, what he's had going on in Fort White? Or does he feel comfortable with that? Cause I really don't know either, you know? I don't, I don't see the code enforcement complaint in Fort White.
When I got the complaint on the collective, me and Mr. Vega had spoken and he told me that he had hired an attorney. So I immediately reached out to Mr. Foreman and explained to him, he said, basically, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe. We, we, I said, I'm not even putting the case in the system because until this goes through litigation, I don't want the county involved in it. Mr. Ford brought up an issue or made a statement a minute ago about management there. I've had three cases down there from the town of Fort White, three. And what I have found out is there's been an issue between the individual and the management there. And that's why when y'all agreed to discontinue this contract, I was very pleased with that because I have found out that it becomes a vindictive thing. If you question the authority down there, then they go after you. Had another case down there, had to deal with a, uh, used car lot. Uh, it was in compliance. A lot of the things that we were seeing was more of a zoning issue and not a code enforcement issue. I looked at the complaint with Mr. Vega and most everything in there is more of a zoning issue. It's not, doesn't have anything to do with code enforcement. Another case I, individual that I had, elderly woman, uh, she inherited her brother's property in the town of Fort White. The lady challenged some stuff that was said to management down there and all of a sudden there's code enforcement complaint. When I went to this property, it took me ten minutes to find it because of where it sits at. You gotta go through a driveway to get in there to it. Yes, there were violations and I, we remedied the violations and I closed the case on the property. When I spoke to her about how this came about because of where her property was at, because she challenged things that were totaled by town of Fort White. And so that's, that's what I'm seeing down there. It's, it's.
So we don't need to be, we don't need to be.
We don't need to be down there.
So, so Winston, what you're saying for people that don't understand, we're complaint driven. We only go code enforcement complaint.
Correct.
And unless somebody's flying in a plane over her house, it would have been hard to see that she had a code violation for what she had a code violation.
You wouldn't have seen it because of the trees.
Okay, so that's what you're saying?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Joel, Joel, chairman, if I could, just, I, I just want to make sure I understand and everybody else understands. So right now in Columbia County, uh, an individual from, from a constituent has to file a complaint or a county commissioner can file a complaint. Complaints cannot be filed by staff in Columbia County. Is that what I'm, is that what I'm understanding?
That has long been our position, yes, sir. We don't allow anyone with an administration, I can't initiate a complaint, the code officers can't initiate.
And, and the reason why we've got that in place is because we don't want our building officials getting mad with somebody or somebody working with our staff and trying to harass them with code enforcement.
Right, is that correct? The idea is to allow the inspectors to remain as independent as possible. And if anybody they directly report to is the complainant, it's very difficult to maintain that. It's not foolproof, but it's a, it's, it's a prophylactic measure. You, you do that to try to avoid any use of code enforcement, any weaponization.
And, and do we allow, do we allow anonymous complaints?
No, we do not.
Not anymore.
You cannot have, that's my statute.
In the past, you could. In the past, you could, Mr. Ford, but we, we corrected that.
That changed actually.
You complained your name is.
Three years ago, the state had said that you can no longer have anonymous complaints. Uh, also last year, I found this out just a month or two ago, but now we actually have to get the home or the complaints address now for these complaints. It's not just the phone number or a name. So we get the name and phone, or address and the phone number.
Mr. Looker?
While, while Mr. Looker's coming up, chairman, I just want to ask Joel one more question. Oh, so all of this was just brought to our attention in the last couple of weeks, is that correct?
Right.
Yes, sir, to this level of understanding, um, I think, uh, uh, Mr. Warner was aware that he had gotten some complaints from the town, but in terms of bringing it to management, it's something he was concerned about. And then us actually reviewing it and, and going through this process, yes, this is very new.
All right, Joel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of things. The state, that was a law, it used to be anonymous complaints. I'm more aware of what anonymous complaints are like in this county, more than most people. Uh, and that was a state law that changed that. You guys had nothing to do with it. As a matter of fact, the, this commission was in favor of anonymous complaints and county commissioners made anonymous complaints. So that's how that worked. I'm a little concerned about the way this, this, this reservation was passed this, this morning. Not one word of discussion. Now, I've been criticized, I published the Columbia County Observer, years, and followed your guys since two thousand and six. And you're not supposed to speak about stuff that comes up before the board. If there wasn't one word of discussion amongst any of the board that I heard, and maybe, maybe I missed it, I go back and listen, but Mr. Hollingsworth just made a motion to dissolve the agreement between the town and the county without one word of discussion. How is anybody even supposed to think that there was not any discussion between anybody or the county manager acting as a liaison, which is against the law? Uh, Mr. Kraus just figured, yes, he knows that. But you guys just automatically, without one word, not even a question, just voted to give away the deal to local agreement. And why the public wouldn't be suspicious of that? That certainly beats me. I would like to know, Mr. Foreman mentioned that this has been a policy, I don't know if it's been a policy or a practice, that county commissioners can make complaints, but I'd like to know if it's written, where that's written, where anybody could see that? Because that's troublesome, I mean, you know, it's the practice, is the practice, the practice can change anytime. And we do know that, that county commissioners do, uh, make complaints in code enforcement. As a matter of fact, Mr. Murphy was sort of for a while like the code enforcement vigilante. He got a list of ten or twelve or eight, a whole bunch. Mr. Murphy, I don't know if he makes complaints for other people, arrives around his district looking to make complaints or other districts. I've seen him at the special magistrate hearings. And I know Mr. Hollingsworth recently made one, the only one I've seen from a county commissioner. Uh, but that's, uh, that's suspect also. But if there's a written policy on this, Mr. Foreman, if you can send that to me or send it to the board. If it's the practice, you could just tell everybody today, that would be great. Maybe you guys should discuss things before you vote on it, so it doesn't look so hinky. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
You're still on, uh, Mr. Foreman?
Oh, next item, yes, sir. Um, the next item I have is a little housekeeping. This is the referendum, uh, resolution that'll be referred to the supervisor of elections for inclusion on the November ballot. This is the straw poll, uh, asking, do you support the dissolution of electoral hospital authority? Um, this needs to be adopted so we can transmit it over to the supervisor and she can begin her process.
I have one comment card. Mr. Warren?
Who, who is coming from?
Pardon?
Who is the comment card from?
For you?
Who is for you?
Uh, it says Sylvester Warren, uh, aisle number four.
I'll call for respect. It goes two ways, two-way street, Commissioner. And you, the chairman, you should know that. And as a matter of fact, as the chairman, Sylvester Warren, as a chairman, this is a, you may want to refer to your turn. This is a public meeting. And in a public meeting, you know, when it's sunshine, you can't have two commissioners down here whispering. Uh, we need to know what they're talking about. Why are two commissioners whispering? I watched it, I got a moment, they're whispering, I like, and we sit in the public, I don't know what they were talking about. I mean, that's fair to me as a citizen, ask Mr. Foreman, am I right, Mr. Foreman? They're whispering, I don't know what they're whispering about.
Yeah, to, to remind the commissioners, when you're in session, any communication between commissioners needs to be into the microphone. So if anything like that did happen, that is, that is correct.
So, are they women saying what they were whispering about? Cause he, he took notes after he whispered.
Who, who are you talking about?
You don't remember, you and, you and, you and Robbie whispering and talking. Y'all were just talking like.
I remember Robbie asking me if there was somebody here from Fort White to speak on the code enforcement.
That's what I asked about.
You can't, you, you, you cannot whisper. Your attorney just told you. And if you don't know policy and, and procedure, and if you're not up to snuff on it, then maybe y'all should have a meeting one-on-one with Joel so he can inform y'all on how to behave yourself accord, according to the court and policy. When I come up here, y'all want me to behave a certain way? When I come up here, I expect for y'all to behave a certain way. It's two-way street, all right? So my question is with this issue with the authority board is what's the interest of the county doing a straw poll when the state legislators, uh, did not have it in their session to deal with? At the end, it didn't make it through. And so you have no authority, no binding authority over the authority board unless you're trying to trigger Chuck Brandon, Jennifer Bradley, get involved for the next session to X the, um, authority board so that you can become receivers of it. Now, my question is, if that's the case, good and fine. But I'm more troubled by the fact that this board, especially you, Commissioner Williams, you saying that you all about your district, but your district don't have any medical K in it. And you ain't been to no meeting to find out that you know that, do you know that FAMU or historical black college is trying to come? And Dale Williams undercutting them and the board is not working with them and that FAMU want to come on the campus? Where's your support for FAMU? Where's your support for medical? But you, y'all getting in the way of wanting to get rid of it, but you. But y'all getting in the way of wanting to get rid of it, but you're not doing anything to support the hospital authority board and bringing in needs and needs for that particular area and undeserved an injury. So maybe that's why you're in a three-man race. So anyhow, thank you for your time.
All right, I have a resolution, number 2024-R-27, a non-binding referendum. Attorney, the Leshaw Hospital Authority, what's the wish of the board?
I make a motion to accept Resolution 2024-R-27.
Second by Mr. Murphy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ford, all in favor of the signature, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lights eye, that motion carries. Mr. Kirby?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First item is surplus properties. We have been asked on multiple occasions to identify the properties in Columbia County that we could put back on the tax roll. We have done this once again, this severe laborious process. We have identified eight parcels. Of those eight, four, we would like to retain some widths fifteen foot plus or minus so we can widen highways in the future. The reason that it's only eight properties, what we've learned through the years, is though we put it back on the tax roll, that's a positive thing. With the growth that we're experiencing between additional highways or retention ponds and things of that nature, when it comes time to acquire those properties, it's very costly. So with that being said, my team now, we reviewed it at length, and not only am I requesting approval to surplus these eight with the four fifteen-foot strips. On an annual basis, about this time of year, we can come back as we acquire new properties and revise it. So we have completed the laborious task once again. I think this is the third time I recall doing it in the last decade. These are the properties that I'm requesting to be surplus. So I'm requesting a motion to approve this final list of properties to surplus.
Seven minutes. Motion by Mr. Murphy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ford, all in favor of the signature, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lights eye, that motion carries.
The next item is a housekeeping item. As you recall, we were concerned about dangerous intersections. So we reached out. We were able to secure a grant to study all of our dangerous intersections and to formalize a property list. This is your resolution. Resolution number 2024-R-26 identifies a vision zero goal of zero fatal and serious injury crashes by 2045. This will qualify the county for future safe streets for all fronts. I'm requesting a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-R-26, Safe Streets For All, which does identify a vision zero and zero fatal serious inquiry by 2045.
Motion on resolution?
Seven minutes.
Motion by Mr. Murphy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor of the signature, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lights eye, that motion carries.
The next is part of your countywide resurfacing. This is Mr. Ford's district. Darius Street, we have three responsible bidders, Anderson's Columbia was low. Requesting a motion to award bid number 2024-08 to Anderson's Columbia for a total bid amount of $813,132.62, and to approve the agreement.
Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Ford.
Second.
Second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor of the signature, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lights eye, that motion carries.
The next item is the sister project, Pondale Hills. This is a dirt-to-pay conversion to Mr. Ford's district, Hydrate Acres. We received two responsible bids, Anderson's Columbia low. I'm requesting a motion to award bid number 24-09 to Anderson's Columbia for a total bid amount of $4,421,632.69, and approve the agreement.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve 2024-09.
Second, Mr. Phillips, all in favor of the signature, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lights eye, that motion carries.
So the next is a quite lengthy issue, or not issue. I'm obligated on a quarterly basis to bring you up to speed on your capital projects. These are your current funded projects. Until they're funded, they do not make this list. So to educate the public, on a monthly basis, I have a team of project managers that we try to look after these jobs very closely. These are your projects outside of your operating budget. We will start with your grants and the projects. Out of the Intermodal Park, I'm pleased to announce your sewer plant is moving on time. We should have it buttoned up by the summer of '25. At the Intermodal Park, your water treatment plant, we're simply taking a close look at that. We obviously have some issues that relates to funding and redundancy. We have entered the Towne Fort White with your water line going from Kennesaw to Fort White. That project is ahead of schedule. 247 in Cannon Creek, we're finalizing with the water manager district permitting review and issuance. So what is going on there? Oakwell Heights, new retention pond, expansion of Bradford Highway or 247 from the interstate to the Bollin Alley, where partners with FDEP, I mean Swannie River, and FDOT. Cypress Lake and Charles, we're punching that job out substantially complete. Pondale Hills, under construction. Hydrate Acres, you just awarded today. Queen Shambria in Winfield, thank you, Commissioner Williams, he's the superintendent of that job. We're doing well on Queen Shambria. We paid it yesterday. Early Roads substantially complete. County Road Six is under construction. Richardson Historical Repair in the design phase. Your administration for your fire department is in the design phase. This is over on Lake Jeffrey Highway at Old Boys Club. Bethlehem Community Center, site work has began. Building is being erected. We just discussed your traffic study. It is underway. The House can give you a resolution. Horton Stillman down at Fort White, sixty percent design, Sky Jordan down at Fort White, design. CR240, this is from 247 over to Prosper Creek Road, it is out to bid. Ellisville, Howe-Fordell, we have begun the design on the installation of signalization south of 75, Quadrant Road in improvement to Howe Road. That design is taking off, and we're preparing RFQ for interchange phase or phase two. So we have seventy-six point four on the docket. We spent eighteen with a balance of fifty-eight point four. So if you kind of take a glance back, every project has been started, complete, under construction. And the biggest message, when we say started, there's as much red tape work that goes on before you see the tractors and the carpings are on ground. I'm pleased to announce your grant side of things, everything is finished, under construction, or started. That concludes the grant side. I'm subjecting any questions before I move to the county side.
Roll back down on first list. Roll it back. All right, hold on.
There you go.
Roll back in. Just start over. On the Capitol project.
There you go.
All right, go up one more. Roll up one more. Fort White. I still don't see it. The water line from Ellisville.
Okay, I'm sorry. I got you out here.
Right here.
Third one down. Third one down.
Hey, guys, this is my turn. We entered into an agreement with Fort White on utilities. That agreement is still in place. Now, I'm tired of hearing the mayor down at Fort White saying that they don't want the water that we run at Fort White. I'm tired of saying the mayor and Connie is saying that the water in Ellisville is better than the water in Fort White. Now, we spent $6 million to run water to Fort White. Now, as we get it done, they're saying they don't want the water. Where are we?
They have no option.
Chairman, if I might, I'd like to add also, Fort White spent a million dollars on this water line themselves for their grant money. They had a million-dollar grant that they put toward this water line. But one of the issues that I was asked about down there is the wholesale rate for water. They want to know what our charge is going to be for wholesale water. Now, me and David had a discussion about this, and at our utility meeting on the fifth. One of the things on our agenda is a rate study for water. In that rate study, they will provide us what the wholesale rate for water should be, that we sell water. So I asked David to send them a letter and just say, look, you know, we're having a rate study done. That rate study will determine that amount, and once we get that amount from the rate study, we'll provide it to them. But at the same time, the county's not setting the rates. Fort White's not setting the rates.
Correct.
That rate study will set the rate.
Absolutely.
Now, they make out like we can just say, we're going to charge y'all $100 a gallon, and that's what it is. Well, we all know there's a regulatory agency out there that don't allow that.
Correct.
So that's not going to happen. But this rate study that's being done will provide a wholesale water rate, what we should charge, and they will provide a commercial rate and a residential rate. And I suggest that we go by whatever that commercial rate is, what's that rate study?
Here's the other problem. When we send correspondence down to Fort White and ask them to copy this town council, the town council's saying they never get it. So what I actually want to do, with anything that we send to Connie, to Fort White, and the mayor, send it to every town council on there too, because they're the ones that say, we don't know what you're talking about.
Lately, we've been doing that because part of the problem is this. All the correspondence between the attorney and our attorney has indicated that Towne Fort White wants to continue the agreement. They have never once told us they don't want to continue the agreement in any official correspondence. So our official correspondence between the two has been, we're good to go, just keep going. And then we hear things, but that's not what they're telling us officially.
Okay, well, I want that communication. If we got to hand-deliver it to the town council members, let's hand-deliver. But I want them to get everything that we send to Fort White.
Okay.
But, Mr. Chairman, when this bulk rate, we'll call it, is established at that time, my feeling is that they should take over their billing, retrieval, and the whole nine yards. We just get a bill. And when you sell them a million gallons a month, you get paid after you hit next month for a million gallons, just like business works. None of this, six months down the road, we're going to write you a check if you are... The meter goes through. But my point is, you know, and I have no idea why it's getting... I know there's some outside, I ain't gonna call it, education pressures, whatever, secret meetings here. Talk about secret. But anyway, my point is, is that once they take on the cost that the county is absorbing right now, to pay, you know, whatever we're paying the young lady up there and all the other costs that's incurred, they'll find out that you'd be lucky if you break even. They need to sit in these utility meetings like Mr. Ford and myself and Ron and several more were there, well, it was several months ago, when Mr. Ray said, you know, there's nobody in this room. It can be alive when these utilities show a profit. So, you know, let's... So sound like somebody down that way is smarter than us, so let them have it.
And the other thing is, when we connect Ellisville to the Towne Fort White, our billing doesn't change.
Correct.
We're still billing the customer directly, the rates that were established by the Towne Fort White.
Correct.
So there is no change in billing. The only time the bulk rate applies is if they say, we want to take back our water system.
And at this time, they have not said that, but what they have indicated is, we want to know what we're going to be charged for the water, so we can do our math and determine if we can make a profit off of it or not at that rate.
Correct.
And then we'll decide if we want it back or not. So, you know...
And the other misnomer that we're hearing is people out there saying, we're just trying to take their consumptive use permit. The bottom line is, the water used in the Towne Fort White is going to be the same amount of water used in the Towne Fort White today, next month, the month after, unless they add more customers. So that consumption stays the same. The only difference is whether you calculate it at the master meter. Anything close to the master meter, that's how much they're using. You compare it against their consumptive use permit, you know how much more water they have before they have to change their consumptive use permit. It's not a question of us taking their water and using it for some other purpose. Their water, they're using it now. They're still going to be using it. The only difference is instead of the well-being behind the fire station next to the sinkhole in the Towne Fort White, the well will be in Ellisville. It's the only difference, and better water quality.
I just think that the city of Fort White's giving a lot of misguided information from outside sources.
Yeah, I would agree.
Good. All right. David? Joel, that's all. Kevin, that's all you have?
No, Joe, I'm ready to carry on to them. Okay, on the county-funded side of things, you have Riverrise Moot Grab down at US 27. Your permit received, water managed by district. We are waiting on our construction documents. You're replacing your elevator door locks to comply with new law. We are under contract to do that. Richardson restroom, we are near completion with that project. Trollim cleanup out at Public Works. We're negotiating with DEP. Geo-admin design is on hold. Traffic Ops building, we've completed the outside. We're on the inside now, under construction. Animal control, obviously, we're functioning. This is on the civil side. We still have to button up a retention pond, and there's some honeydews, landscaping, things of that nature. Lake City Reporter Building, roof and stone. Construction document for interior is underway. May erode. This connects Pine Mount to US 90. We have got a permit. We have got a set of final plans. We're on the right-of-way acquisition process. The intent on this project is a dirt-to-pay conversion. Once all the right-of-ways acquired, along with your permitting and design, we're going to turn it over to FDOT for consideration of dirt-to-pay conversion.
Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Yes, let's explain that process now of what DOT requires to submit a road to pay from dirt-to-pay conversion.
Right, so first of all, you have to make sure a road qualifies for DOT. Historic to scrap, copper, seeped. On this particular road, the reason it's a good qualified candidate is you will alleviate the traffic off the state highway system by connecting Pine Mount or CR250 to US 90. That's the purpose of qualification before we even consider it. Look, Mr. Ford is referring to, back in the old days, you just went to DOT and said, hey, will y'all help us with the dirt-to-pay conversion? If they took a look at it and it qualified, they said, yes. But what they recognized was everybody would spend all this time and money, and it would come down to acquisition of property, okay? And then folks were pushed back. Boards did not want to do eminent domain, things of that nature, so the project would fall apart. So we really go to DOT and said, here's how it's going to work moving forward, fellers. Y'all do your design, you get your permit, you acquire your property, you do all that up Fort Worth, then submit to us. If you don't do all that, don't submit it to us. Make sense?
So basically, now we can't submit a road until we have it permitted, designed, and have bought the right-of-way.
On dirt-to-pay conversions.
On dirt-to-pay.
Okay, let's see, where was I? English M and M. Is that where we're at?
Yeah.
English M and M is under construction. Bascom Marsh at Faith at 247. This is where you contribute your money on an annual basis. This will be your third installment. This project slated for construction of 2027. This is your major improvement for Faith over towards Fairgrounds, that bad intersection. Mr. Murphy, we're out in the airport roads. We landed there this week. Bradley... Spradley, Calvin, Menlo substantially complete, Commissar Williams district. Whale Ridge is under construction in Commissar Ford's district. Jay Road is under contract, and you awarded Downing Street earlier this morning. So, you have about eight million in county side, about a million spent, seven million dollar ballots. Once again, every project on their county side is under some form of moving forward. So, you're either designing, permitting, constructing, or complete. That concludes your current capital project update. I would really appreciate some studying of what we're doing to prepare for your proposed capital projects for upcoming fiscal year. Well, now, I'm buttoned up, Mr. Chairman, if you don't have any questions.
Any other questions, Mr. Murphy?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, y'all.
We got one.
Sir.
Give me an update on any issue, L M R.
We have no considerable issues right now. Um, we bumped into a little abandonment of a well issue, we made our way through that. Besides that, it's, it's, it's on time, it's, it's moving forward, we do not have any issues that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's kind of a slow process with the rain and all that kind of stuff, too. People been asking me, that's why I kind of wanted.
Yeah, yeah, so there are no financial issues, and as far as the schedule, we have what we call rain days and recovery days. So, when it rains, you get rained out, then we have to recover from the rain. But time, as far as contract time versus what the contractor's doing, he's timely.
All right, thank you. Kevin, one, one more question. The water line from Ellisville to Fort White, are we still three to four months ahead of schedule on that?
Yes, sir, and let me validate what I mean when I say that, and I've had a lot of calls about it. We are going back and going to hail up everything about three or four inches, hydro seed, we're going to restore everything. To answer your question, the project in totality is about four months ahead of schedule. But we're in the town as we speak, this morning. Um, but it will all be nice and, uh, pretty when we're done.
Well, I was just going to say, I appreciate them moving on up by the school, because we know schools going to open pretty quick, and hopefully they can get all that direct pouring done before the, the bus traffic.
I had a meeting down there yesterday morning, I thank you, school.
I think, I think so, too.
I think we got fifteen or so days before school starts, yeah. So, we'll get real lucky, we'll hold that. Yes.
Thank y'all.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Bows? Thank you very much. Uh, the first one, I'll go over real quick, because I know we got a work session after this. First is Resolution 2024-25, a local housing assistance plan amendment. Basically, uh, we've had a request, and the, uh, 20 Economic Council has requested to amend the HAP, L HAP, to add a rental development strategy. What this does is it will allow the developers of the Sweetwater project to be eligible for and possibly receive some eight, two, per eight hundred and forty thousand dollars in hurricane housing recovery program funds from the state. So, it's an amendment to the L HAP.
All right, and the motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-R dash 25?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Ford. Subject by Mr. Hollenworth, all in favor, signal of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lights out, that motion carries.
The next item is the setting of the millage rate. Uh, this is mandated by TRIM. Uh, basically, we're asking you to set the millage rate tentatively, again, because permanent final adoption will be as part of the budget hearings. Uh, but the tentative millage rate would be set at seven point eight one five zero per one thousand, which will allow us to finish the P R 420 required by state law, and it will generate an additional two million, seven hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars for next year's budget.
Motion. Make a motion to approve by Mr. Murphy.
Thank you.
Subject by Mr. Ho- uh, Mr. Phillips, Ms. Phillips, Mr. Chairman.
All right, that's fine.
All, all in favor, signal of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
And so this then will translate into the ads that we run every year, which says, you know, in a very confusing way, what we're doing. We've all seen the TRIM ads, and they're not easily understandable. Appointments to the Tourist Development Council, Mr. Chris Win is here, if he'd like to stand up, or just... He, we would like to appoint him to the Tourist Development Council, they did not have a quorum, so we're asking the board to just go ahead and appoint.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, before we go forth, uh, Chris has been, uh, he was one of the applicants that, uh, to come forth. Uh, we, we've had an issue with trying to get a quorum from time to time, especially during these summer months. Uh, our last board, we had a discussion that we're gonna, we're gonna try to adjust the times of the meetings to maybe not interfere with the people, that board members', uh, schedules as bad. So, uh, Chris is, uh, he's been an asset to the county, he's, uh, kind of directing the, no, not kind of, he is directing the pier project down here for the city. And, uh, Chris has been an asset to the community, I've become to know him, uh, he works real close with Clint on a lot of our boat ramp projects, so, uh, looking for big, big things, so we're going to hold him accountable.
We're excited about it.
Chris, you have anything you'd like to say?
You have to come to the podium, I, I can't let you speak in there.
Thank you for the kind words, Commissioner Murphy, uh, I'm kind of excited about this opportunity. Uh, spoke at the last T D C, uh, board meeting and told them that, hey, if I can help out on the board, I'll do that, and, and if not, I'll still help out, you know what I mean? So, I've been working with the Fish and Wildlife Commission for about twenty years, and, um, we, uh, we're, we're working on this fishing pier, I'm really excited about that. I want to slip in a quick announcement, today, we're issuing the notice to proceed to construction on the fishing pier for Lake Montgomery, and, um, we're going to need to close the park down, uh, I think starting August 20th. Uh, we've been, you know, coordinating with the city on that, but, uh, yeah, with your approval, I, I'm, I'd be really honored to, uh, serve on the Tourism Development Council, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Well, uh, motion on the floor.
Second.
Uh, we got a second by, Mr., we got a motion by...
Okay, I'll make the motion, I, I'll make the motion to approve Chris Win to the church.
And a second by Mr. Ford, all in favor, signal of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
You was getting that evil ass from her down there, I seen it.
The next item, there are three items that the T D C requests the board to approve. Uh, again, they were unable to have a quorum, so they couldn't vote. Uh, these are things that either have occurred or need to occur in the near future, and so they're asking the board to approve them. First one is the Off Our Rocker Dying Green Foundation Bumpers Bulls and Barrels Rodeo. They want to hold September 6th and 7th, they need two thousand dollars for that. Um, they attract people from all over the state and country to come down to Columbia County and participate in their rodeo. The second one is the Columbia Youth Soccer Association, they held a Lake City Under the Lights three-by-three soccer tournament, and so they're requesting two thousand five hundred dollars. And then finally, the Swanee Bicycle Association is producing a video that will include Columbia County, uh, called The Greater Good. It will be broadcast on W U T F PBS as part of a six-minute video, and they're only requesting two hundred and fifty dollars. We're asking the board of county commissioners to approve these expenditures.
Motion.
So moved.
Uh, Mr. Murphy.
Second.
Mr. Ford, all in favor, signal of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
The next item is to call for a special meeting. Uh, we were originally going to call for it on August 22nd, you have one board member who will not be able to be there, and request that you delay it one week. It's clearly the board's call. At this meeting, we will consider the budgets for the constitutional officers, and we'll submit to you the floor budget.
All right, motion to a move, so moved. Got a motion by Mr. Ford.
Second.
Subject by Mr. Phillips, all in favor, signal of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
May I ask for a clarification? So, the August 22nd is what you said? So, are you approving on the 22nd, or are you going to move it a week so that all of you can be here?
It, we move it a week from the 22nd, I think that's the 27th.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. Because I think, I think I'm gonna... Yeah, it'd be twenty-nine. But now, any, if we can move, I mean...
What day is that?
I'm the twenty-ninth. Thursday.
It does not have to be on a Thursday?
Yeah. I'm going to be out of town that whole week, so...
So, either way, then you'll be missing one board member.
It's a vacation we planned for months, so...
So, David, do you have to have this meeting, uh, in September?
August.
I mean, August?
You have the preliminary, the first public hearing of the budget, the first meeting in September.
So, you got to have it.
So, we got, so we got to have it.
We could consider the constitutional budgets prior to the 20th, the election, or we call a special meeting?
We, we got to have this meeting, guys, by stature, we got to have this one.
Let's see. So... So, when are you leaving, Robbie?
I'm leaving, uh, the Monday after the election, so that'll be 21st.
21st, yeah.
I'm leaving, I'm leaving on the 23rd.
Wait a second, not the mu- mu- well, the Monday after the election, the Monday 26th. Okay, so that's the 26th, so that's why the 22nd wasn't a problem.
I'm leaving on the 23rd.
When?
23rd, I'll be back on the 26th.
I'm leaving the Monday following the elec- in other words, the, the Monday after the Tuesday of the election.
So...
Um...
When are you?
Sunday night.
I'm just staying with you. So, what do we have?
What can we have, the Wednesday, 28th?
We don't have no problem.
Coming back Friday, but that'll be late, so...
You coming back Friday?
Yeah, but it'll be late when I get this five hours.
We could schedule it for that Friday at, uh, at the 5:30, 5:30, 6 o'clock meeting?
That Friday?
Be the, uh, I, I, be the 30th? David, is that too late, the 30th?
That's cutting it close.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we looked up the advertisement, the advertisement.
First meeting I ever missed, so I feel bad about it, but...
Well, I mean...
Well, well, if I understood Mr. Ford yesterday, and he said, "Let's have the meeting," I'd be the first meeting he missed.
Okay.
So, what now?
Isn't that what you just said?
Just have, we just have to have it.
First meeting I ever missed.
Yeah. So, I was good with the 22nd, but I didn't know somebody else had it.
I'll be out of town 22nd, so...
Okay.
But I mean, yeah, I don't, that, that don't stop y'all from having a meeting, I guess, so I can't get out of the... We, we booked this several months ago.
Okay.
It looks like Joel may have a comment.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you could just call for a clarified motion to establish the date and time, I think the clerk needs that. Somebody can make the motion establishing the date and time.
Well, just leave it for the 22nd.
I think Joel wants you to make another motion.
Yeah, make a motion stating the date and time.
I'll just make a motion, you have it on the 22nd, like I was playing it.
At what time?
We got a motion by...
By time, if you want to have it on the 22nd.
But Mr. Ford, 20, 22nd?
What time?
Or David, what time you want to have it?
Uh, do you prefer afternoons, mornings? Right now, we have it booked for the morning, but we can do it in the afternoon.
Say, say what?
Right now, we have the room booked for the morning, but the room's also available in the afternoon, or in the morning.
Fine, well, me.
What, 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 just give me a time for the motion.
Uh, we're going to do it at 9:30 in the morning.
Okay.
It says 9:00 AM, here, the motion.
9:00 AM, okay.
It says 9:00 AM, so we might as well just, yeah.
That's what's in there, 9:00 AM.
Ma- ma- ma'am, this is what we're going to do, we want to set a special meeting for August the 22nd at 9:00 AM. Now, can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
We got a motion, a second. Motion by Mr. Hollenworth, subject by Mr. Ford. All in favor, all in favor, signal of saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, are we going to strike with our motion?
Yes, ma'am.
And for clarification, that's in this room. The location is right here. We've already booked it, it's taken care of.
Okay.
So, then there was one other addition that we had, um, let me go back to the additions, and that was Columbia EMS start date. I believe in your agenda package John sent out yesterday was a modified second amendment to the agreement with Columbia EMS. So, what is happening is we got a phone call from Century, and they said, "We're losing people because they know the transition's happening, and we're having trouble staffing five ambulances. Can we use other agencies to help us?" They reached out to AmeriPro, AmeriPro, and they also reached out to Columbia EMS to say, "Hey, could you staff an ambulance early?" And, uh, Columbia EMS was more than happy to help them. Uh, their issue is, right now, their first payment is October 1st. They're asking the board's consideration to move that to a month early so that they can staff an ambulance for Century. So, you would pay them four hundred thousand dollars instead of October 1st, you would pay them September 1st.
Well, it's very important that we do so, uh, because if we do not, we are going to have Columbia County, uh, need, uh, emergency service and won't be able to get it.
So, I, I just want to clarify, Chairman, that we're not paying them any more money, we're just paying them early money we owe them a month early.
Yes.
Still the same, same price on the contract.
Still the same price, still the same payment schedule, uh, half of it upfront, half of it spread over the remaining twelve months.
Is that going to affect the, uh, budget, anything, for this year at all?
Well, what we're going to have to do, and Amy and I have discussed this, is we're going to have to basically take some money from fund balance, spend it this year, and then next year, put it back into fund balance.
Okay.
So, you're loaning yourself four hundred thousand dollars for one month.
That's, that's, that's good, as long as you work it out financially through the budget, that's all.
You need a motion for that?
Yes, you need to adopt the actual agreement that Joel drafted.
So, I'll, I'll make a motion that we move up Columbia EMS payment from October 1st to September 1st.
And adopt the, and adopt the second amendment?
Second amendment.
And got a second by Mr. Phillips. All in favor, signal of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Great. Great.
Okay.
We got to do the comments.
All right, uh, we have open public comments, three minutes. Anyone want to address the board in open comments? You have three minutes to do so. Yes, sir?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Sorry for the time it took to walk, oh, my truck, it hurt my leg, I'm not sure how that happened. Uh, I have a, a question. Earlier, when you were speaking about Fort White, the board mentioned that you're going to do a rate study, and from the rate study, you're going to determine a wholesale rate for the town of Fort White. That means for people that don't want to be a meter on the line, or whatever water that goes into Fort White, the county will charge for that based on what the rate study said. That would make sense. And one of my understanding is, is that the county is now looking to get a wholesale rate from the city for water at the Plum Creek, whatever mega industrial park now. And that's not based on any rate study. Apparently, that's based on a negotiation. So, I'm trying to figure out how it is that Fort White, their water rate is based on a, on a rate study, but the county is negotiating with Lake City for a wholesale rate. And maybe the board could explain the difference in that. The other thing was, I've been at the last couple of Fort White meetings, and I'm not exactly sure what you guys are hearing, maybe you should just tune into the videotape to me use, so you can see them the next day, whenever they put them up, I guess. One of the town councilmen I spoke to said that he doesn't know how to use the internet. I know that was a problem here in the past, that we had at least lunch efficiency that just refused to use a smartphone, and they were difficult to use, or the internet. However, that apparently has changed. But if you look at the video, the town council, uh, it was mentioned at the meeting, the town clerk said that all the information that they get is being forwarded to the council people. So, unless this board is getting official communications from a clerk, or an official communication from the mayor, or an official communication from the attorney, it sounds like you guys are doing it like Facebook, with some of you guys in Facebook is news, which it's not. It's that you want to do stuff through the grapevine, and you have the county chairman saying that, "Well, we're hearing all sorts of stuff." We all hear all sorts of stuff, we heard that one of our former presidents was born in Kenya, we found that that was wrong. So, I think what you need to do is, you don't need to send it to everybody, you need to pay attention to the official communications that go back and forth between the town council or the town clerk You need to pay attention to the official communications that go back and forth between the town council or the town clerk and the county manager or the county commissioner or your attorneys. And that's all I have to say, and rumors and propaganda stuff doesn't work.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for clarification, at this point in time, the city is not in, the city of Lake City is not pursuing a bulk rate with the county. At this time.
Okay. All right, would there be anyone else?
And for clarification also, we had one of the Fort White council members at a meeting that basically said he don't get the, he don't get the information.
Yeah.
So...
Yes, sir. We are not talking about what we heard, we are talking about what was told by the town council member. They do not get the information that y'all say y'all send to Fort White. Now, if it's a lie, that's the county, the town council told me. Anyone else? Okay, no one else on public comments, uh, commission of comments? No commission of comments? Uh, Joel, anything? Kevin, David?
Just really short, we know there is a storm out in the Atlantic. It's at least seven days away from here, probably a little bit longer. We are watching it, and we are preparing just in case.
Okay. All right, well, we are immediately going into our workshop after a five-minute break. Uh, I won't be here, I'm going to turn the chair over to the vice chair to, uh, to handle the workshop. Uh, so motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All right, we adjourn.